Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lunandary Town Council meeting for June 7th, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing, as is our tradition, for a moment of silence. I will offer it to the crowd this evening. Does anyone have something they would like us to give praise to in a moment of silence? If not, I'll come up with something. Why don't we think about all those healthcare workers that got us through COVID? And their families, and who got us all here in this room tonight, so that we can actually stand here without our masks on? Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is the most people we've had in the room since COVID started. The health officer and the fire chief are in the back. If they decide we get too many people in the room, they're going to ask people to move. So just be, we're still practicing social distancing. You know, be smart and, you know, take care of yourselves out there, okay? First order of business is public comment. I have a few items to cover from the council, then I will go to the public. Chief, you have some introduction to new firefighters tonight?
I do, sir. It's been quite some time since the fire department has been over here to introduce you to our new personnel. So I have quite a few of them outside that have been hired since 2019. So I'd like to bring them in to introduce them to you.
So here, I am very proud to say, the people that you see here in front of you range from late 2018 to the most recent of being 2021. This is our new communication center. So everybody that we've had prior to that were longtime employees have all since retired. So this is my staff here now that performs a magnificent function over there by not only dispatching for the town of Lunandary, but the town of Hampstead, the town of Pellham, and then soon to be probably sometime in September, the town of Candia. So I'd like to introduce Melissa Castanaway, Brittany Hazen, Matt? There we go. Victoria Dickens, and Bruce Halliwell Jr.
Thank you. I just want to turn right around, you can say hello to the council, and we'll say hello to you. Congratulations. Good to meet you, Matt. Nice to meet you. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. Thanks for being with us. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Floor's still yours, chief.
Next, we have a group of firefighters. Over the last three or four years, we've had a lot of people that, you know, have retired after careers ranging anywhere from 22 years up to 36, 37 years. So this is a group of people that the fire department has brought on, all very good professional men and women who go through a abundance of training and go through a pretty extensive background process to become part of our department. So I would like to introduce you to Brian Fowler, Peter Repaldi, Andrew Greenbaum, Justin McCarthy, and Hannah Cody. Hannah, I am proud to say, started off as a disfactor for us back in 2020, I believe, and has recently moved to the line to be one of our newest firefighters. Ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. 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 Hannah, you keep all them in line, right?
So thank you very much for the time and opportunity again. I'm very proud of the men and women that make up our department. They're all professionals. They all worked very hard over this past year, more above and beyond, you know, our normal workday, and I couldn't be more proud of them. We have two more coming on. As of the 14th of June, we have Jason Pinchon, who is a Department of Justice firefighter at Georgia. And then we have Derek Wall, who is a town resident, that his grandfather was the first full-time police chief of the town in the 1940s. So they'll be signed on the 14th, and I'll bring them in at another time to introduce them to you as well.
And you've been here a couple of years too, right, chief?
Yeah, probably years.
Was it 34 years, chief?
Staton, 36 in July.
36 years. And 10 years as the fire chief. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for your department. Okay, I have one other, I have one other thing from the council for public comment. You know, we got into COVID and everything, and we, you know, a lot of things went by the wayside, and we weren't able to recognize people who had been serving the community for many, many years. There's a little thing we used to do here in town that we're going to start back up again this year after taking a hiatus last year called Old Home Day. I say it's a little thing to be facetious is, is that, you know, there were, there were thousands of people attended in 2019, may have been on the 300th anniversary of one of the largest Old Home Days we ever had. And what a lot of people don't know is, there's a lot of history, and the person I'm talking about knows all that history. And back when Troy Brown left the town, she took over Old Home Day. And, you know, we never really got a proper way to thank her going into her retirement. So I'd like the town manager to come up here and to present this bouquet to Kathy Wagner for her many years of service as the chairperson of Old Home Day. You're welcome to say anything, any words you would like, Kathy.
I accept this bouquet. On behalf of everyone who, along the 20 years of doing this, helped a lot. Troy Brown started Kids Night back in 2001. He did it in the, until he left the town, and then Adriana Camos took over, and then Tim and Tammy Siekmann, and then finally Dan Leekus. Great group of people with Kids Night. Very weird group of people that came in and started on, in 1999. Lot of old names. Ken Hajar, Junie Vickers, Maggie Verani. And Steve and I went down because they needed a banner for the roadway, which maybe someday we can get back, putting it back over Mammoth. But we went down and we volunteered our time. And thanks to Ken and Mark, they actually started the Friday night concert because we were trying to get the Air Force Band to play on Saturday night, and they couldn't come up because we didn't have any money. And so they would do it for free, and that's how the concert and the fireworks got moved to Friday. And then we brought the senior night in, and, you know, Old Home Day is what it is. I can't express how much Reed Paige Clark has had to do with Old Home Day and all the different parade chairman. I mean, that's how I started. Mark Oswald was the first parade coordinator, and I got my lessons under him, and then I took parade, and once Troy left, I took over that. And we kept trying to make it more inclusive, like we did Movie Night, but it was difficult with Movie Night because, you know, mosquitoes and stuff like that. Then we started Applestock, and thank God for the Band Kids, because the Band Kids actually started Applestock, because many of the bands were in, what is that, the Prism concert they do at the end of the year? So a lot of those kids, and shout out to Brandon Cardwell, he did a lot of it. Doug Cardwell and his wife at the time were there doing the first ones. And Applestock was really a fronty name, because the first year we did it for the kids, it rained really, really bad. So it was like a Woodstock experience, because there was so much mud, because before the drainage on the common, which is the new common, you know how big that mud puddle would get in front of the bandstand? So, you know, so that. And then Sunday was always the religious aspect, but I think the most important feature of the whole thing for Old Home Day for all of us is, we've preserved the tradition of the third Thursday and Saturday for, for the duration of, you know, so 122 years. So says a lot about the character of the, the community and the people that volunteer, and I would like to see more people step up and bring a new vibe to it, because, you know, 20 years of doing it, it got stale, so, for me. But, you know, hopefully new people bring new ideas and we keep it going, because it is a great, great tradition, and it is so good for the community.
Well, thank you, and we thank you for your service, and 2019 wasn't stale.
No, it wasn't, right, but, right, it wasn't, and it was a nice fireworks, and everything's worked out well, and hopefully, you know, I agree this year, unfortunately, with getting rid of Kids Night, because it would just be too difficult putting all the little ones in the bounce houses and keeping those COVID-free, but, you know, I think there's a good class of people picking up, and I wish them all the luck, and good, this year will be okay, but good luck next year when political season starts for that parade, because that's when you're going to need it, so.
So thank you, Kathy.
No, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the public comment version of portion of the town council meeting. Does anyone who would like to approach the council now and address something with us, this would be the time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have something that I would like to, to read. As y'all know, I normally shoot from the hip when I'm speaking, but tonight, I feel that it's appropriate for me to read this. So please forgive me if I stutter a little bit or stammer. I'm not really used to just reading something. So, Mr. Chair, after our last town council meeting, when councillor James Butler blindsided me with an untrue accusation of what he termed ethical violations, he took another opportunity to try and tarnish my reputation while the other councillors wanted clarification on the matter. I feel I need to make this statement to set the record straight. Mr. Butler speculated that my business might receive advertising from a group that appeared before the planning board during a design review. Just so you all know, I was assigned to be the liaison to the planning board, and which I tried to do the best that I can there. I chose to run for town council for the taxpayers of this community, not to draw more advertising dollar for my job. If anything, taking on the responsibilities of the town council have affected my business in an adverse way. Curiously, Mr. Butler didn't speculate on the landscaper that might receive landscaping work, or the real estate agent that may receive listings or contracts from new buildings that come before the planning board. No, he focused solely on me, once again, trying to harass, intimidate, and tarnish my name and my business. So frankly, Mr. Chair, I've had enough. I have acquired an attorney to review the accusations made by Mr. Butler. My attorney, after reviewing the founded accusations, said they were without merit and frankly laughable. I want to know what the status is on this investigation. Mr. Chair, you asked the other two councillors what they wanted to do. You suggested contacting the town attorney to get a clarification. Well, I'm seeking that clarification tonight. I'm done being bullied and harassed by you, Mr. Butler. Clearly, you have a problem with me. Maybe it's because I'm not afraid to speak my mind or to ask questions. I guess I'm just not even sure why. Mr. Butler, just like you, I was elected to represent the citizens of Lunandary and will continue to do so to the best of my ability for my last year and a half. And I'm not going to fall in line, as you had suggested I should. I'm done with you trying to shut me up and intimidate me. Mr. Chair, if the board wants to waste its time and the taxpayer dollars yet again to appease Mr. Butler, then please go ahead, but I've done nothing wrong and will no longer tolerate this harassment from him or this board. And frankly, Mr. Butler and this board owe me a public apology for the way I've been treated. Thank you.
So.
May I respond?
No. So, I was prepared to deal with this later in the meeting, but I'll deal with it now. So at the other councillor's request, I did speak with the town's attorney. I have spoken to each of you individually, and I'll be very clear in my comments. Nobody won anything, nobody lost anything that night. It was just, it was really a situation that caught me flat-footed. What I mean by flat-footed was, is that statements were made and I was not prepared. I'm prepared now. So being prepared now, I have reread the charter, spoken to the town attorney, I've reread the ethics ordinance. There is a process that is in place to be followed if someone has an accusation of improprieties of a town councillor. That can be of the pub, a person in the public through the ethics ordinance, or that can be through the town council, through the charter. So going forward, what I want to see is, is that we follow the rules and the laws that are set in place. If you have an issue with somebody, follow the charter. If you want to follow the charter and you have, you know, charges you want to bring, bring the charges through the charter, and we'll handle them appropriately through the charter. If a member of the public wants to bring charges, bring it through the ethics ordinance. And we will follow the ethics ordinance, and we will follow the law. The rules are the same for everybody. Nobody gets their own rules. We have one set of rules, the rules of the town council, the rules of order. We follow the town charter, we follow the state constitution that we all have sworn an oath to, and we follow the law. That's really all I have to say about it. There is no investigation, as of, you know, and if one is to be brought, it needs to be brought through that process. Now, we had quite a bit said the last meeting. I think it's time to move forward. Would you both agree?
I will move forward if I receive an apology, because I did nothing wrong.
Well, you know, I, I can't force or demand anyone to apologize.
No, I know you can't, but I'm just telling you how I feel.
I'm happy for you to make a comment.
Thank you.
I, I would, you know, respectfully request that you make your comments through the chair.
Mr. Chair, when Deb Paul came on as a councillor, newly elected, it was either the second or third meeting, she involved my family and made accusations, to the point where my family had to come down to a public meeting and defend themselves, if, for no reason whatsoever. And people can go, you can find the dates and the times of the meeting, the town attorney was there, and there was a big argument about, about this situation, right? Deb attacked my, my, quite frankly, Deb Paul attacked my, my credibility, and I will not tolerate that. For my kids to have to come down to a town meeting to justify what they've done for this town is totally unacceptable. So Deb Paul wants to know, Mr. Chairman, where it started? It started with Deb Paul. And anyone in this audience to have to have their kids come down and defend themselves and defend their father, it's a, that was shameful. That's what I have to say.
Okay, so I'm going to wrap things up here, and what I'm going to very simply say is, is that we have a process. We're going to follow the process. And I can tell you, as long as I'm sitting here as the chairman, I'm not going to tolerate an outburst like what happened at the last meeting again. So if the two of you need to go have a cup of coffee and sit down and have a discussion, go sit down and have a discussion, have a cup of coffee and work it out. But I'm going to tell all the five, the four of you and myself the same thing, I'm going to tell you what the town manager asked me when he was hired. There are five things that matter here, okay? It's in, and these are the five most important things that we do. Make sure that we're funded and we're ready, and when someone calls the police, they come. When you call the fire department, they come. You plow the roads, you pick up the trash, and you make sure the kids are safe across the street. After that, everything else, as far as driving tax revenues and everything else, that's all one thing. Pick what you want to get done. And I will do my darnedest to make every person's goal on here, as I've stated before, to be accomplished. Figure out what that is, focus on what's important to you, and let's move forward. Can we do that? All right, moving forward. Ladies and gentlemen, public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council during public comment? Well, I appreciate it and thank you for your, for listening to us, Arrow Lunandary up here. I'm moving to a public hearing. Can I have a, a motion to open a public hearing for the barn preservation easement at 15 Parmenter Road?
Someone's chairman?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, public hearing is open. Who's presenting?
It's going to be presented by Steve Hamilton and Dan Scalzo with our assessing department. And if you would indulge me for just a second, Mr. Chair, Dan was unable to attend the last meeting when I introduced the new employees, but Dan has been on as our assistant assessor since January. Comes to us from MRI, where he worked with a number of towns in their assessing departments, and we're very happy to have him onboard.
Thank you.
Well, Dan, congratulations, and what I'll say is, I think it's great that you're working with Steve. We're going into unprecedented times here in Lunandary. I'm seeing houses sell for $25,000 to $100,000 over asking price. We have a marketplace that, which is almost near impossible to try to figure out what the valuation is, because it changes five minutes from now. So we're looking forward to great things coming out of the assessing department and working with you all. Please proceed.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you all, and it is, it's great to have Dan onboard. He provides a great liaison between Whitney Consulting Group and myself as the assessor and the assessing role, but also the other employees within Town Hall. So Dan's working out very well so far. Tonight, we have a public hearing on a fairly simple matter. It's a barn discretionary preservation easement. The purpose of these easements are to make it so that a person who wishes to preserve a historic barn within any community may be able to do that without suffering any penalty of assessment for the maintenance and repair of that barn through time, as they can become rather expensive to maintain, and the, the law contemplated that assessors might think that maintenance and repair of barns would equate to large increases in value. This program provides for a certain assessment of the property over a 10-year period of the discretionary easement. The discretionary easement may be, it may be amended at the end of the 10-year period, it may be reinstated at the end of the 10-year period, but it preserves an assessment on the property at a percentage of its market assessment for that 10-year period. The other thing that it does is that it preserves that value for the barn in the maintenance and repair of the barn. But it does not set in stone an assessment if there's a change in the use of the barn. So, for example, if an agricultural barn was converted into a residential apartment building, there'd only be a protection of the part of the value which is associated with maintaining and repairing the barn, but the conversion of use to an apartment building would be at the market value rate. So there, there's a way for a property owner to preserve their property, maintain and repair that for the benefit of everybody in the town, to maintain the history, the charm and the character of the town, but also provides a pathway, if there is a change in use, to an office or to some other more intensive use. That's the basics of this barn preservation easement. We're happy to answer any questions if you might have any.
Council's, questions from the council?
I just want to, excuse me, I just want to be clear. So this covers the preservation of it, and so say the owner sells, right? Does this stay with it, or does the new owner have to reapply for it?
That's an excellent question. This is an easement which is recorded at the registry of deeds, and it stays with the property for the length of the easement.
Okay, so if the new, say the new owners were to, to do their business, or to, like you said, make an apartment out of it, it then would get reevaluated?
It would be reflective of that conversion of use.
Okay, so how do they know whether or not they've changed the use of it?
So we inspect properties on a regular basis for a number of reasons.
When you say regular, what do you mean, like every two years, every five years?
So we inspect all of the property on, on a every-five-year basis, but any property that receives a building permit, we inspect it in that year.
Okay.
So when, when somebody goes through a planning board process, or a site plan approval process, we inspect those properties, we're notified of those potential changes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject and on this subject only? Yes, please come forward. Name and address for our records, please.
Anne Champa, 28 Wedgwood Drive. I just have one question about the application itself. I know Kathy and Steve, Kathy's been long been involved in preservation in the town of Lunandary, as a chair of the demolition delay committee, involved with the Butrick Farm, that some of it was saved before the Elliott at Lunandary came through for what became a Starbucks, or bank before Starbucks. But I just have one question, a small question about the application, if Kathy can help me with it.
You can ask me the question, and I'll, and we'll go from there.
It, it said on, for the 75% assessment reduction, this is just a minor thing, it won't affect the overall picture, but just, I just want clarification. It says for the 75% assessment reduction, aid structure must qualify for one or more of the following, and they do, with the current use of the property be agricultural. It's checked off, yes. But number three, it says the physical or aesthetic features contribute to the historic or cultural integrity of the property listed or eligible for listed, listing, and then Hampshire Register of Historic Places, and they checked, yes. Well, there's an application process you have to go through, you nominate yourself or have somebody else nominate you, and involves a lot, a lot of research and documentation of the structure, just to be eligible for that recognition, and might be on the register. The Lunandary Historical Society went through that with the Morrison House Museum recently. And I'm, I'm not sure if Kathy, Kathy and Steve, Kathy has done that, and I just want clarification if they have or if they haven't put in the application to the Division of Historical Resources.
Steve, have you spoken to the applicant about this?
So, that's just one of the requirements on that, and as it was just underlined for eligible, and she checked off the current use of the property to be agricultural, that counts as one of the following, so we didn't.
I know, it doesn't matter. One of that is checked off, but I just want to qualify that third thing.
Right. Because one of those qualifications is enough to qualify.
Oh, yes. I know that, but.
We didn't, we didn't proceed further to examine.
So it has no effect on the application?
It doesn't affect the application itself.
No.
I, I know that, and I hope Kathy gets it, but I just want a clarification, if that is correct or not.
You're asking out of curiosity, then?
Well, well, to see if it's accurate.
Well, it doesn't affect the application, so you're asking out of curiosity.
Well, it doesn't affect the outcome at all.
Just so we're clear, would you like to answer?
I'll have Steve.
Thank you. Steve Young, 15 Parmenter Road with Kathy, as well as McGregor Cutt, and it's very hard not to say my old address, I'll tell you that. What I can do is I can address, many of you may not know that Kathy actually researched this law about 18 years ago, this RSA, and she brought it to the town council at the time to get approval, so that a number of barns in the community would be able to apply for it. At this time, I believe, these, these gentlemen might know better, but I think there are five barns. I know that Hank Peterson is one of them. There's a barn on High Range Road that's presently cl-. There's a barn on High Range Road that's presently clad in green. There's a barn on Hobie that is a stone barn, and I don't, don't recall the rest of them. To the point of, if you have to read the regulation carefully, it does not indicate that you have to be approved as a New Hampshire historic property. It indicates that you have to qualify as a historic property barn in New Hampshire to, to be able to apply for that. So specifically, you don't have to get that, but you do need to qualify for that. The reasons that Parmenter Barn would qualify for it, it is a part of a connected farmhouse, which is called Big House, Little House, and Back House Barn. Some may have noticed that our back house is missing. It's literally in our kitchen there, and we will be reconstructing that. The only way that the barn could be lifted out of the flood zone would end up higher so that the sills wouldn't be rotting further, was to remove that part of the structure. That will be replaced with the same components that were in it when it was, when it was taken down. The property has historic significance. Kathy has a document that was actually written by Bill Longmade. Bill Longmade was the owner from 1977 until we purchased it about 18 years ago, and he did research on the Marsh family. On the Marsh family, there were two, two men who, brothers who had a fight, and they were over on what's now called Old Nashua Road, and one of the brothers had to leave, so they dragged over a one-third house, which is one-third of the big house on the property, the one that's closest to the road by Oxon, and then that's where he then had his, you know, had his, his new property and his new farm. Bill Longmade did a nice job of doing all of the research on that. He shared that at LondonderryBarns.org. LondonderryBarns.org is a website that's still active today, and it catalogs the 50 barns that were left in the, in town at the time that that was published, and that would be at this time about 16 years ago. There are less at this point. Some have been torn down. Some have been moved. As a matter of fact, Bill Longmade wanted a barn so bad, there was a barn on Litchfield Road.
Ned Reynolds.
The Ned Reynolds property, that they wanted to build a new modern house, so they tore everything down. The home went to the.
The extensions went to the Historic Society for the barn.
Yeah.
And the barn went to Bill Longmade.
And, but the house went to.
I don't think house.
No, the house, the house went, the Pothier. The house went to Pothier, who, who sells and preserves properties, what are called timber frame properties. A lot of people call it post and beam, but post and beam actually involves steel. So the, the barn is a timber frame barn. There's no nails in the barn. It's all posts with wood pins in it. It was built somewhere between 1840 and 1850, based on the people that we've had look at it. The original one-third house was built in the early 1700s. It was moved there in the late 1700s, and then these homes were then, it was then connected to the Big House, Little House, Back House Barn. Of other historical significance, and this is one of the questions that we satisfied is with the state, is the occupants of the house need to be of notable background. We have a picture of Priscilla Parmenter sitting on the front steps, and we had conversations with Priscilla. She sadly passed away about two years ago. She was a state rep. She was, I believe, from Merrimack.
Okay, Canterbury.
No, well, she moved to Canterbury, but she was a state rep when she was in Merrimack. She was also on the planning board in Merrimack. Also, Draper Parmenter lived in the house, and the Parmenter, the really Parmenter post here in town was, was named after him as one of the, one of those people. He passed away on Christmas Day in 1942. He went down in a seaplane in the Pacific, and we have a picture of him with his birth date and the date that he went down in his uniform. So, there's a lot, a lot of history there, which then qualifies it for the historical significance here in New Hampshire. But again, the RSA only indicates that we are required to qualify for, not to apply for. I hope that helps.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions, Ann?
No, but that's basically the Chapter 79D discretionary preservation easement. I hate to go over this, but you, basically, the term eligible is actually qualified. It isn't just because it has a lot of history back behind it, which I know this house does 100%.
Right.
But it, in order to be eligible, you have to go through a process with the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources.
And that's a separate issue from this application?
But it's, it's in the application. It's checked off that it's eligible, or can be on the State Register of Historic Places. But you have to make that application, that nomination to the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that. I'm, this, this barn probably would get it if it was, it was nominated and gone through that process. I'm not disputing the history of it.
I understand.
Has the house and the barn, both, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate your comments. I'm going to address them with Mr. Hamilton, but I.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. So, Steve, do you think we need to change the application?
No, I think that the, the application, it barely captures the essence of what's required, and that isn't meeting all of the, those elements, but one or more of the elements. And so, we believe that the, the application format is fine, and we think that the information that's contained on it, I have no way to dispute whether or not this is an eligible property. It sounds like it probably would be an eligible property. But importantly, we need to make sure that we treat all of these, these properties similarly, and there are, I believe, six other structures that are already granted this type of easement within Londonderry to help to preserve that important historical aspect.
So your recommendation is the council approves this application as presented?
That would be our recommendation.
Okay. Yes?
John, Kathy Wagner, 402 McGregor Court, or 12 McGregor Court, 403. Are the other barns, the six, do you know if they've had to present to the state to get eligibility requirements?
As far as that goes, I wouldn't, we wouldn't have that information. Most of these have been active for at least five or more years.
And Ann, do you know, have you researched that to find out that why our?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, no worries.
I've been out of this for a long time. I mean, are all these other six barns?
I have no idea.
I would like to know if.
She's asking if you know if the other six barns have gone through the process?
And if they were eligible.
No, but when you check off that line.
I understand.
Either you have applied, or you haven't. They are eminently qualified to get this tax reduction without it, but it's just, I was qualifying one line in there.
I understand.
That I thought was questionable.
We've read the RSA many times, and the RSA basically states that we're in, that you can select eligible, and it's our choice if we would like to go and have it put on the Historic Register. And as of right now, we don't know. Maybe we will in 10 years, maybe we will.
So I would ask that in the future, you work with Mr. Hamilton if you go forward on that, and then we can go through that process. Okay?
Doesn't matter if she does, or if she doesn't to this application, but it was just checked off, that's why.
Okay.
And as we've gone through the process already, and knew what it entails, I just wanted to mention that.
I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything further from the council? Is there anything further from the public? I'll accept a motion for the council to approve and sign the discretionary barn preservation easement that is in front of me right now tonight.
So moved chairman.
I'll take a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and we will sign this tonight. I signed it. There you go. Thank you, we're moving on. We're still in public hearing. Public hearing, Resolution 2021-15, a resolution relative to the acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA 31:95B. Mr. Campo's not, Mr. Campo just had, they just had a new baby, right? So are you taking over tonight, sir?
On new daddy duties, so.
Congratulations to, to the Campo family. Another, another grandchild for, you know, for the Campos, and a child for Justin and his wife.
So congratulations to them. There's a few gifts and donations that we'll be looking for the council to accept this evening. There's two resolutions, one needs to be done in public. The first one is for 2002 Stewart and Stevenson's five-ton cargo truck, which comes from the State Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, and that is going to the fire department. And then there's a number of unanticipated revenue items. The return of surplus from Health Trust, and the amount of $161,574. Citizens Bank, the credit card rebate program that we have, a little over $23,000. Liberty Utilities rebate, $10,838. And then Rockingham Nutrition on Wheels, it's their contribution to the senior center cleaning costs, and the amount of $2,800. And I would just note that all of this money, $198,381.81, will go toward the bottom line at the end of our fiscal year, which ends in approximately 23 days.
Could chairman make a, a motion to accept the, the amounts as described by the town manager?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, that's $380,389.81. Did I call for the vote already? I did, thank you. Losing my mind here. All right, I'll take a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, we'll come out of public hearing. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the new business portion of our, of our council meeting. This is a discussion on the I-93 south barriers. So I have been contacted by a number of folks on Trolley Car Lane. The council has also seen those emails, as I may have been the one responding, but they have seen those emails as well. Based on that information and the communications with the homeowners on Trolley Car Lane, I asked the town manager to reach out to the, to the highway department in the state, and to get us an update on where we're at with these, with these sound barriers. And is someone from the highway department here tonight?
I don't believe so, not unless Wendy's here. I did invite Wendy Johnson, who's the project manager for this, the exit 4A project, to come here, but I don't see her here this evening.
So, do you have an update for us before? I know there's folks here from Trolley Car Lane, so what update do you have for us right now?
So, I have engaged New Hampshire DOT a number of times on this matter, as this is not the first time it's been raised. And originally, these sound barriers along Trolley Car Lane were supposed to be installed as part of the I-93 widening project. As the 93 widening project was wrapping up, and the exit 4A project was moving forward, the engineers team with those projects decided to delay the installation of those sound barriers, realizing that they were going to have to be uninstalled in order to construct the exit interchange for exit 4A. And so now, those sound barriers, the cost of those sound barriers, that money has been moved to the exit 4A project, and will be constructed during the time that the interstate interchange is being constructed, which is slated to begin in the spring of 2022, with completion of that portion in 2023. So my understanding from New Hampshire DOT is that sometime between spring of '22 and fall of 2023, those sound barriers will be installed. In the, in the off chance that exit 4A is not constructed, and why do I say off chance? There's $95 million sitting in a fund of money at New Hampshire DOT for that project. And the governor has committed to having that project be constructed, but in the chance that it was not constructed, the sound barriers would still be, the money would still be allocated for the sound barriers to be constructed at that time. So that is the explanation that I've received from, from DOT.
Okay. So any questions from the council?
I have a question, chairman.
Yes.
The sound barriers, both sides of the highway are only on the, on the west side?
Both sides, but since the exit interchange crosses both lanes, because you're going to be able to access 4A east from both the north and southbound lanes, they haven't been constructed on either side.
Is there any follow-up? Is there any way to prioritize with the DOT that when they erect the sound barriers, that they do the west side first because of the proximity of the homes?
I don't, I haven't asked that question, I don't know.
Okay. So, how many folks are here from Trolley Car Lane? Do you have one person who can speak for you? I mean, usually we don't do public comment during new business or anything, but you're here, and you should be heard. So is there one person who can speak for you? Yes, please, please, please come on up. I just have, please have a seat, and just give us your name and your address, and that's, and that's really for our records, so one of our, our administrators keeping our minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman, town council. My name is Dan Bragg, live at 5 Trolley Car Lane. Been a resident of Londonderry 15, 16 years. And 2005, when I moved in, the realtor told me that they, there was a highway expansion plan, and that there would be a sound barrier. I went online, found the DOT, New Hampshire DOT site, read the documentation, the environmental impact statement, and saw the plan. The plan said proposed sound barrier. So I was satisfied, just waiting for the highway to be built. When the highway was nearing completion, after 10 years of waiting and three years of listening to explosions and all sorts of stuff going on, we were very happy, all the people. Trolley Car Lane were happy, expecting that the sound barrier, noise barrier would be constructed, when it didn't happen, and started making phone calls. And that's when I was told that we would have to wait another two to three years for this work to be done. I'm an architect, I understand what plans mean, I understand that there's certain areas that need to be protected, or set off limits for the contractors to build their work. I do not see how the entire sound barrier can be in the construction zone for the 4A overpass. So that didn't make sense to me. The noises that are here, I've got a decibel gauge on my phone, and then in the morning, starting at 5:30 and going on until 9:00, the noise is about 70 or above at times, and especially diesel trucks and motorcycles are very disruptive. Then we were really counting on having a noise barrier. A lot of people were. And it's, it's very disappointing to find that the change has been made, and we were not notified, and it apparently was done with the design team without comment to the town. I don't know. I haven't been to all the meetings, but I haven't heard anything in the, in the local newspaper, or anywhere where it said, yes, we're going to build it, but the noise barrier is going to be postponed until 2003. I'm very disappointed with that. And when I talked to Wendy, I said, well, why can't you just build it? Because I don't know whether you're going to come up with the $30 million you need for the, the work. She said, plans are already out, are being prepared, and the spring of 2022 is when they're going to have the documents. I'm just, would really like to have an answer to the question. You know, can we have the part of the sound barrier up to 32 Trolley Car Lane built? And then skip the zone where they're building the highway or the overpass and then build it? I think that would give us some immediate benefit. And I'd really hope that you guys, all of you, need to be more respectful, but all of you, all your town council people can advocate on our behalf, because we're the ones who are enduring the noise. And since I've been working at home and the weather's been better, I open my window, but I have to close my window because of the noise. And I would just appreciate if all of you could step forward for us and talk to whoever you need, the governor, senators, congressmen, judges, anybody. If you can get us a sound wall, we would appreciate it.
So I had sent you an email back with my telephone number. I'm telling you, you did receive it.
Yes, I did. Thank you so much. Thank you. And everyone, I'm very, very happy that whenever I talk to, or sent a message to Kevin or to you, John, that we've gotten quick response. And even New Hampshire Department of Transportation has been responsive, but they just haven't been saying the right things, so.
All right. So let me talk to the council for a second. Don't go anywhere. Let me talk to the council for a second. So what I'm looking for here, I think you've all seen the correspondence and everything else, is I would like to get a consensus from the council if we would be okay with having Mr. Malaguti, our town solicitor, craft a strongly worded letter to the commissioner from the council, expressing our displeasure with the current circumstance and look for a remedy. I mean, one thing the council's learned from COVID is, is we make a plan and then we make one 15 minutes later. So, you know, so plans can be shifted. So I'd be looking for a consensus from the council, to the council, to write a letter to the commissioner, supporting the residents' position and asking them for, you know, earlier remedy to the situation.
Got to make it right.
All right. And if we don't receive, I want to do it to give us all at once. If we don't get what the answer we're looking for, for the commissioner, for that then to be forwarded with another letter to the governor. Yes?
Yes. But I would, and I would also arm Mr. Malaguti with another option. And we're going to get some gauge from the residents here, how they feel. But we have experience with airport noise where the mitigation has been, the FAA has come in and soundproofed the homes with new windows and central air conditioning, so you don't have to open the windows and things like that, which tend to keep the, additional insulation in the home to keep the noise from the aircraft lower. Would something like that be helpful if, to bridge the gap until the sound walls get built? If they could, if they came in and put in new insulated windows, insulation, and central air conditioning?
And to be clear, that's something we would have to handle legislatively. And he's a state rep.
Yeah.
So that's a bill he can introduce if it was something that you were interested in.
Well, we live across the street. My wife and I live at 5 Trolley Car, which is on the west side of Trolley Car Lane. The past year or so, we've installed, had installed this mini split air conditioner, so we can turn, close the windows and turn the air conditioning on when it's like 96 degrees outside. That helps. But I realize there's a lot of people on the street who can't do that or are not able to. And I don't know how effective it would be when you're, say, 100 feet from the highway. I just think that the noise barrier is a solution, and we'd like to see them build it sooner and not later.
Okay. Just looking for additional?
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you. We know that the many construction projects, and we've seen this Gilcrest and 102 intersection paved and torn up and paved or repaved. I understand that if 4A goes forward, they will need access to those, that property. That's great. I think we understand that. We don't want to stop 4A, and we don't want to interrupt the traffic on 93, even though we would like it to be quieter. But I think many times in the business of construction, that sometimes you build something and then you have to take part of it down to build some other part of it. Since we don't know what the schedule is for 4A, we think it may be prudent to go ahead and build the sound wall that was supposed to be built with the rebuilding 93 project. So we all expected, helps us out, we'll take it. If they have to come back and take a few hundred feet of it up to map off, mark off a zone, do that. A lot of times in projects, you do make changes and temporary construction so that something can go forward. So I would think that they might look for a solution that would allow them to build this noise barrier and then have part of it demounted, build 4A when the time comes, and put it back up. I think we'd be okay with that.
So what I can promise you is that we will take the steps to make them listen to us.
Thank you.
I can't promise you what they'll do. What I will promise you is that we will get them to a decision, one way or the other.
Right. We appreciate that.
And, you know, and you'll get an answer.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's a big part about why we're here. It's one of those five things.
Will you be contacting me or will we?
You'll hear from Kevin.
Kevin, okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
And you have my number. You can call me anytime you want.
Thank you.
And I'll send you a copy of the letter that Attorney Malaguti sends out.
And I'll share it with my amigos on Trolley Car Lane. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. We really enjoyed having an audience. We haven't seen anybody all year.
Well, we decided to come make a little noise for Trolley Car Lane.
Good for you.
I don't blame you. Kevin, so that's not fully funded right now?
What?
4A?
No, it is.
Fully funded?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
They're just holding it, and that's the way they've decided to do their construction. Okay. So we're going to move on. Order 2021-09, an order relative to the licensing of junkyard pursuant to RSA 236 for SNS Metals. You're stepping down?
Yes.
Please, please note the minutes that Counselor Paul is stepping down because she has a conflict of interest that she does business with SNS Metals. Who's presenting? Brad?
Brad and Norma.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, counsel. On May 25th, Norma and I, our new code enforcement officer, went out to both junkyards to SNS Metal Recycling and to Murray's Auto Recycling. And we found no opposing conditions out there. They're following best manufactured procedures, practices. And my recommendation to you is for renewal of their license.
So I get the only question I think we had outstanding, I don't know if it doesn't necessarily pertain to you, is, is there were questions about the Jersey barriers that are still out front near the roadway. I know they're not within the right-of-way, but we asked the police and fire department to take a look at that and make sure that they're good with that. And since they're the ones who would have to respond if there needed to be a rescue. So do we have response from the public safety officers?
Yeah. Chief O'Brien informed me that he did go out and inspect it and that he did not see that the barriers posed a safety hazard at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you would accept a motion to?
Do we want to do the, both of them at the same time?
Yes. That we approve orders 2021-09 and 2021-10.
So I still have a motion on the floor, but I have a question.
Yeah, point of order. I'm sorry.
No, no, please proceed. We just jumped ahead a little bit.
I'm just wondering about the geo insight. And it says that NHDES and MTBE remediation bureau were talking about some remediation that has to be done or is expected to be done between spring, summer, 2021, removing of the soil excavation. Didn't know if you guys questioned them on that at all or?
We did not.
Okay. So, I mean, it's just, it's in here, so it's something that was asked by DH, NHDES. So what's in your packet too? I mean, I'm not saying it should hold up this process, but I just think that that needs to be stipulated.
Well, I think if I may?
Sure.
I believe the issue between the junkyards and DES is a real issue, but it's not an issue that matters to the town licensing process.
Okay. You want to talk about Murray's Junkyard as well?
Yes.
That would be great. And then I can take them both at the same time.
They did. They said they visited both.
You were fine with Murray's as well? There was no issues at Murray's?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You know, I've been sitting up here a long time and everything. That's like, you know, it's nice to hear. Usually I'm, you know, getting ready for, you know, the whole long conversation, seeing Ed Dudak. I don't even see him here.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing, before you take them both up, I would just maybe see if Counselor Paul was planning on recusing herself on both in case she wanted to vote on Murray's.
I believe she does business with Murray's as well, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
Is she out of the room?
She is.
Okay.
She wants to, she's good? So let the record reflect that Counselor Paul has stepped down for both Order 2021 and Order 2021-09 and 2021-10 because she does business with both of the applicants. So I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say my by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Both licensing are approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, all right, next thing. Mr. Malaguti, authorization to submit a grant to New Hampshire DES Drinking Groundwater Trust Fund, Lancaster Drive. And while you're here, you might as well do the second one as well.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Mike Malaguti. I'm the Assistant Town Solicitor. I'll start with the Lancaster Drive project. As the council knows, in March, the voters approved the expenditure of $250,000 to be raised through taxation.
Let the record reflect that Counselor Paul has rejoined the council.
I'll, I'll just start from the beginning.
No, it's okay. I could hear you. That's why I came in.
My voice carries. So as the council knows, this is a kind of an issue that's developing on a daily basis, the extent of the problem. And as part of the town's response, we've been working to identify all possible solutions and all possible funding sources to address this issue. The town is pursuing a DES drinking water and groundwater trust fund grant that may allow us to complete the Lancaster Drive waterline extension, either fully or partially with DES dollars and not town dollars. So with that goal in mind, I'm here simply to request that the council authorize us to submit that grant application. And if that grant's application is approved, I'll be back before you with a more detailed request to actually approve the acceptance of that grant.
Okay. Any questions on that grant? Seeing none, the next grant is the rebate program.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So as the council knows, about a quarter of Londonderry is inside the St. Gobain Consent Decree area. Most of the town is not. Additionally, there are, I think, two localized areas of contamination where there's a responsible party or a potentially responsible party supplying bottled water and paying for testing at the present time. In these areas, residents with PFAS exceedances in their wells may be eligible for assistance from St. Gobain or from these responsible parties. However, there are many residences in town which are not inside the consent decree area but are affected by PFAS exceedances in their wells. They're not being assisted by anybody in terms of bottled water, et cetera. So in general, the town is not legally responsible for PFAS contamination or for remedying it. However, seeing this as a pressing threat to many of our residents and understanding the town's singular ability to leverage its influence, the council has adopted an aggressive stance with an eye toward resolving this problem for the residents. The most immediate concern is securing short-term measures that will prevent the consumption of PFAS in drinking water. We are submitting, asking for authority to submit another grant to the DES Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund, which would assist residents in addressing this immediate concern. The town proposes a rebate program whereby the town will provide up to $500 rebate payments on a one-time basis for qualifying owners for their costs expended on certain qualifying PFAS mitigation measures. What are these measures? We envision qualifying measures as including the following: bottled water, qualifying water pitchers, the purchase and installation of point-of-use and point-of-entry systems, and replacement filters for these measures. Exactly like my previous request, I'm simply here to request authority to pursue this grant and submit an application. And if rewarded, I'll be back before you with a more detailed request for approval.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
When DES was here last week, they complimented the town on its forward thinking and actions in this regard and that we should be used as a model for other towns in the state for stepping out and helping our constituents with this problem. And like they said, like they said, DES said, that they really appreciated also the fact that we were working so closely with them to try to get the word out to people for our residents' safety and for the consumption of potable water. So I think that reflects well on us as a community and as a local government.
Fantastic. That's great. I mean, I'm really, everyone has really stepped up in the community to help around this whole PFOA piece. So I have documents here that I have to sign. I'll take care of those. And are you doing the Max Apple thing too?
I am.
Attorney Malaguti, do we want a motion to, to, I guess, give us the authority to present these, just so it's reflected in the minutes?
Yes, I think on at least one of them, they may be looking for minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Mr. Malaguti to pursue the grants for both DES drinking groundwater trust for Lancaster Drive and for our overall rebate program.
Second. All those in favor, say my by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Now, Max Apples and update and lease.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So as everybody knows, the town is buying five acres for municipal purposes at 114 Pillsbury Road. The town is buying the back 21 acres and change to be held in conservation. That, those closings are both scheduled for July 2nd. Everything is proceeding according to plan. So recognizing that with regard to the municipal parcel, it may be five, 10, 15 years, it may be never, that the town actually identifies a specific use for that parcel. And so in the meantime, the town doesn't want to be in the apple business. But we all know what unmaintained orchards look like. And so there have been discussions about the possibility of Moose Hill Orchards, now under new ownership, leasing the property back from the town in a way that satisfies both the town's interests and Moose Hill Orchard's interests. And so what I've put before you in your materials is a proposed lease. The purpose of me presenting it tonight is to get the council's input and to see if there's any revisions the council would like to see reflected in the lease. I will just, it's a, it's a, all leases, all legal documents have certain boilerplate provisions. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on those, but I'll highlight the, kind of the most important provisions as I see them. It's a lease for agricultural purposes only, and I'll define agricultural purposes in a minute. As proposed, it would run for one year. And really, it would commence on the date of the property transfers to the town and would extend for, automatically for 10 additional one-year periods unless either party opts out. Rent would be $1, and Moose Hill Orchards would be entitled to the profits generated from its agricultural activities taking place on the property. Right up front is Section 3, which identifies as a material condition of the lease, the preservation of the apple trees in good repair and according to best agricultural practices. The property will be maintained as open space. And to further define agriculture, this proposal includes the production of plant products for domestic or commercial purposes, the growing, stocking, cutting, and/or sale of Christmas trees in a manner that does not impact the apple trees, the processing, sale of products that are produced on the properties, and just pick your own fruits and vegetables, all to the extent that these activities are not inconsistent with scenic, agricultural, historical, recreational, or wildlife value of the property. historical, recreational, or wildlife value of the property. This mirrors in many ways the existing restrictions that are in place on, uh, Moose Hill Orchards townwide. Though, let's see, that is Moose Hill Orchards shall permit pedestrian, pedestrian, uh, public access onto the property at all reasonable times, dates, and seasons, which will not impair, uh, uh, his, uh, his ability to use the property for agricultural purposes. Um, it is acknowledged that that is a material condition of the lease. Uh, and lastly, uh, we would have the ability to, uh, to terminate for cause, and also to terminate for no cause. Um, and in my informal discussions with, uh, Mr. Crestenson, uh, he, uh, stated that there is a certain investment that takes place into the orchard early in the season, uh, and if we were to kind of accept the benefit of that investment and then turn around and, uh, terminate the lease, uh, mid-season, that would, uh, be unjust, uh, to him. So the proposal before you is a six-month, uh, termination, uh, for the town's convenience provision. I'm happy to take any of the council's questions.
Questions? Anyone?
It's all the things I wanted to have, so.
No, um, and Conservation Commission is going to follow a similar lease for their piece of property as well?
That's correct, and that'll be presented to the Conservation Commission at their next meeting.
All right, and the town manager will sign off on that?
Correct.
Okay, I, I believe, I think we need to check, I believe all contracts still have to come here for final approval.
Um, yes, in general, I think that's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, um, if we have nothing further for Mr. Malaguti. We see nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, ladies and gentlemen, Resolution 2021-16, a resolution relative to the acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA 31:95B for recreation. Thanks for coming, folks. Who's presenting?
I believe Mr. Salitis, uh, who's here this evening, may want to come up and just say a few words about, uh, this particular donation.
So for our records, Art Salitis, Recreation Director.
Thank you for inviting me, Mr. Smith.
My pleasure.
Um, one of the citizens in town approached me about doing a fundraiser at our playground to make the playground more inclusive, to help kids with certain handicaps, who, right now, aren't able to enjoy the playground. So I said, absolutely, we can do that, but you have to raise the money, and she has gone out and done that, she's got a little bit of help. And what we would, what she would like to do is use some of that money to start out and buy a, um, a swing, just kind of like a chair, to get it going, because the equipment is extremely expensive. She asked me how much, you know, we could build, and I said, depends how much you can raise. Um, it's not easy raising money, but money has been coming in, and I've been working with Mr. Campo to handle the money, and looking to just start out with something small, just a seat that certain kids can sit in and enjoy swinging at the playground. And it is hoped that, as this goes on, there will be more people that want to donate and help this program get even bigger.
Any questions? Yes?
Um, I, I actually, the Green Team and I had been talking about that, um, playground. Um, I was involved when the Moms Group originally did it years ago, and we, it has fallen into a little bit of, uh, disarray, but I found a recycling company that we can do, and I talked to, uh, Jason Parent, um, there's a whole recycling team, I guess, at the high school, um, that we might be able to do collections, and they'll donate, um, uh, playground equipment. So it's, it's an option, I'm just putting it out there for you.
When I hear the word donate, I'm on board.
Well, I just, I happened to stumble across it, you know, doing the benches, I found this other organization that, um, was talking about collections and things that they do, and you, you have to have a compelling story, and this is just perfect. So if we could maybe set a meeting up with you, um, Jason Parent, and myself, and someone else from the Green Team, and talk about how we could get the students to even be involved, and like I said, they have a whole recycling team, which I didn't know about, but I guess they do.
I will not contact Jason this week, busy week for him.
Oh, no, 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 we could do it maybe when he has some lull time.
One school's out would be a good idea, so.
I, I just thought, because we were thinking about doing that, so that, that plays into that perfectly, and now we have the compelling story, because I'm, I'm excited. Sorry. This is great.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in, in a situation like this, um, this is a non-town organization that's in the midst of raising money for this.
It's not really an organization.
Well, it's, it's not an arm of the town, of the town. It's not a, it's not an official arm of the town.
But one of the, what we ran into, people wanted to donate, and who do they give the money to?
Right.
So, in talking to Justin to keep everything perfect, so, well, it can go through the town, and it's going to have to come to the town council to expend it.
Right, I, I'm thinking, prior to the point where we expend it, uh, I've been at this long enough to see, uh, money be raised, and then, um, the, the accounting of the money gets soft, and some of the money ends up slipping through our fingers, uh, with the organization's fingers. So I guess, what I'm suggesting is that we help, one of the ways that we might be able to help, and I have to turn to the town manager on this, is could we, as a town, provide a, um, an opportunity to collect the money and have it secured in a bank account somewhere, or in the town's records, uh, and under the town clerk, or under, under somebody that doesn't just have a, a gray box with a buckle on it in the backseat of their car.
Yeah, we, we do that now for the Kent Allen Forest, when people want to make donations, so we could similarly set up something like that.
Okay, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would be in favor of that.
Right back.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd be in favor of that, in order to, uh, if, if the organization thinks they have $5,000 to donate, and they, they go and they count their money, and they have $4,200, and they can't figure out where the other 800 went, uh, not to disparage anybody's honesty, but, uh, when you're, when you're holding cash, and this, in, in many cases, this is cash, uh, it, it can become very difficult to manage that. Uh, so I would suggest that we ask the town manager and the finance director to figure out a way to receive that money temporarily, in order to keep it secure and keep accountability on it, to help the organization.
All of the checks now, any money that comes in, it's made out to the town of Londonderry, and it's given to Justin. My reason for doing that is to protect the people who are doing the fundraising, because it's very easy, on the other hand, somebody gives $1,000, and, well, I gave you $2,000. And I, I just, it protects the people that are doing the volunteer work.
Uh, we're not tax attorneys, but when somebody donates like that, do, do they get a tax write-off? Is there, is there a, maybe we need to ask Mike for advice on that, but is there a tax write-off for?
Justin will have to answer it, but my, my gut would tell me if it's a donation to the municipality, I don't believe that's a, a tax write-off.
No.
Or a, um...
Mr. Chairman, can I get, make a point real quick?
Sure.
So, I think this is a pass-through, I know Justin's not here right now, but I'm sure he explains, this, this to me is a pass-through, so, what they've done is they've collected a certain amount of money, and what Justin's saying is that we want to accept that hundred, $1,049, so that in turn, they're going to go and purchase, we're going to go and purchase that swing.
Right.
So it's just a pass-through, it's just a formality, really, of accounting for that $1,049. I know what you're saying, what about all the other money? That's probably not, that's probably something separate we have to deal with, but this today is just for our pass-through.
Right, but this sounds to me like this is an ongoing effort, if we're gonna, if we're gonna modernize the, the playground to include, include, uh, kids that have some issues, that there's going to be, continue to be money donated, and maybe it's a, and a buil- a building thing, maybe there's mo- some momentum once they see a few things. I just want to make sure that the, the money that gets donated isn't sitting in someone's backseat of their car, and, and, uh, oh my God, what, what happened to that gray box?
Can we, I mean, we might be able to develop a trust fund or something like that to, to deal with it, you know what I mean?
I, I would leave it up to you and Justin to figure that out.
Yeah, it, they currently go in a, a liability account, donations of this nature, and, uh, God bless our finance director, he's watching the meeting right now, and said it is a write-off if you make a donation, so.
I stand corrected.
So I believe, when we went through a forensic audit several years ago, we put in place a way to handle all of this cash, and any, um, any money that comes into the building, and I, I believe there is a process in place, but yes.
I, I just, I, I just know that because of the Green Team, the only way we can have, let people write off a donation is that we have to be a 501(c)(3). Um, otherwise, it's just a donation that you can put into, like, um, like a campaign donation, if it's not over a certain amount of money, it's kind of bundled into, I'm writing off X amount of dollars, but as a specific write-off, I believe you have to have a, a federal tax ID number and associate, um, be a 501(c)(3) or four or six.
Maybe we should ask Justin to come and explain to us.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm happy to have Justin come and talk to it about it at the next meeting.
Because I know we couldn't do, we can't do it, and so I would assume it works the same way, because we're in the process of writing the bylaws and...
Clearly, the rules are different for municipalities and nonprofits.
Right, right. Well, when you say the group is collecting the money...
No, it's not, it, it's not a group, there is no group.
I, it's volunteers.
It's one person and one helper who is, who have just wanted to improve the playground, so it's, somebody comes in across, from across the street and says, "I'd like to put an infield in at Laffa, how do I do that?"
Right.
You know, so we've got to make it, if they're going to get donations, we, I want to protect them.
Right.
Okay, and I want to make sure that if $1,000 is donated, $1,000 is there.
No, I, I remember when we sold the stones and the, the things for, for the Moms Club that did the whole park to begin with.
Becoming a 501(c)(3), it's...
It's a little dicey.
Well, it's a little dicey, especially for one person or two people
Right.
that just want to improve the playground, they don't really want to get into that.
Right, but they can also...
We have, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we, we have a, um, a, a new level of, of ethics and, uh, doing the right thing in the community. I, I'm old enough, been around long enough to remember that we were going to put a hockey rink on the, on the town common, you remember?
Yep.
And that was, there were a lot of money
Yep.
donated for that, and poof, it all went away, and, and no one really knows what happened to the money, and I don't want to see that happen again, that's all.
I don't disagree with you at all.
Okay, so we have processes and procedures in place, based on the forensic audit that took place in 2014, so I would ask that we follow those processes and procedures and the ones laid out by our auditors every year, and let's continue down that path. So you need a motion to accept this money, right? All right, can I have a motion to accept it's, um...
Resolution 2021-16?
Yeah, it's $1,049, and...
So moved?
Second. Oh, $1,049, so moved, yes, moved, second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, thank you very much for donating the money. Um, thank you, Mr. Salitis.
You're welcome, thank you, gentlemen.
Next, um, next item for business, approval of May 17th, 20, uh, 21 council meetings, um, line number 171, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 words in. It says SJE, it should be SHE for she. I've noted, I have not noted any other things in the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So will.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just noticed something. On the next line, 172...
Oh, did I miss one?
Across is as, should be his as.
Uh, let's make that correction as well, with those two amendments?
Um, and 159?
And 159?
It says, um, 79, 792 square feet for the building, and I believe it's 19,702 square feet.
Take the K out, 19,792 square feet.
The chairman would like to make, uh, a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, minutes are approved. All right, so, um, real quickly on the CIP Committee members, so, Chris, um, let me handle this first. Moving back to something that's not on the agenda, I have, um, had the occasion to speak with Ms. Christine Patton, a member of the Budget Committee today. It's sad for me to, um, to report that she will be resigning. Um, her husband is diagnosed with stage 3 pancreatic cancer in November of 2020. He's gone through chemo and just finished radiation earlier this year. Regardless, his health continues to decline, to the point of needing assistance for basic needs. I need to focus on him and whatever time we have left. I enjoyed my, uh, terms in the Budget Committee, doing my, uh, the best I can to keep our taxes down and hope to be back someday. My last request is for all of you to send good thoughts our way, thank you, Christine Patton. I spoke with her today, and Mark has gone, um, they've brought hospice into the house. I've spoken with the fire chief, and we have, uh, made, uh, notes, uh, he has made notes within the dispatch, so that we'll be there to assist the Patton family. So I would accept a motion, I did ask her to rescind her resignation, and to, um, give it some time, and she insisted that, um, I accept her resignation. So I would ask for a motion to accept her resignation.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Uh, Kirby, please start the process for, uh, posting and advertising for the, uh, town council to appoint another Budget Committee member. Uh, the other thing I have on here before I go to the CIP is, is summer schedule. Um, I'm proposing a summer schedule of the following. Um, in looking at the calendar, I'm looking at summer schedule of, uh, July 20th, July 12th, for, uh, the meeting of, for, uh, the summer session of council, so that's July 12th, and then looking at, um, August 16th as the, uh, August meeting. And then I'm looking at the calendar, with, uh, Labor Day falling late, we wouldn't have another meeting until September 13th, so I am proposing an August 30th meeting, that we can, you know, to be determined, we may, we may move that, but let's tentatively put that in the schedule, and then the following meeting after that would be September 13th. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, CIP. So since Christine's not returning to the Budget Committee, and not returning as the chairperson of the CIP, um, and it's been requested, um, that I join the CIP once again, and looking at the members that will be on it this year, it, it appears that I will be one of the only members with past experience. So, um, with the council's permission, I will continue for one more year on the CIP, and, um, and hopefully we'll get some people on there up to speed so that we can, um, you know, rotate some other people through. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, that's CIP.
I need, uh, I need a motion to approve everyone on the CIP here.
Okay, so, um, could someone please, since I'm going to be one of the people on it, can, the memo is in your packet, can someone please make the motion?
So moved?
All right, be...
As written, so, uh, town, you want me to read them?
Yes, please.
Uh, Town Council Representative John Farrell, School Board Representative Jen Gammon, Mike Saucier, uh, Budget Committee Representative Steve Beral, and Planning Board Representative Jake Butler and Bruce Holloway.
All those in, uh, any a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, and I will abstain. So, um, I'm, I'm sorry, let me pull my, uh, my agenda back up here. Um, I have, um, liaison reports, do I have any new liaison reports? Yes?
Not really new, but repetitive to what I was saying, um, ZBA?
Uh huh.
Again, more chickens, more signs. We really need to take a look at this ordinance, um, it's getting...
Maybe we have less turkeys in town, maybe?
Yeah. I, I don't know, but I, I just think that we should look at it just to...
More chickens, more signs.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, um, so when we have new ordinances, they really need to start with the planning board, so maybe what we need to do is talk to the planning department, I know there's sign ordinances, we've had, they should be coming back in public here in, in July, maybe we can get some of these things cleaned up, since we've, um, you know, put them on the back burner for the last year.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, anything else, liaison reports?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Help me, Lisa, when is our, uh, our workshop?
Uh, Thursday, June 17th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the cafeteria.
So, so, what she just said is, uh, is when we're going to bring in our, uh, testing vendors and our mitigation vendors for, for well water in town, uh, and, uh, I would appreciate if, uh, if we get a, a good showing from, uh, senior members of the staff and the council, uh, it's going to be in the, it's going to be in the cafe, uh, and it's going to be like, like a trade show.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, and we'll have DES will, will be there as well. So that's kind of a big deal for us, and kind of a culmination of the... So that's kind of a big deal for us, and kind of a culmination of the, of the task force's work that, that we all started here a few months ago, so that's, that's coming up. That's our next, our next deal.
Fantastic. Okay, we have Leadership Londonderry on June 10th. As many councils who have, if, it is not a meeting, and if the councils have responded to, Lisa, please, what time is it start again? Six?
I think, I believe it's at 5 o'clock.
5 is the dinner, graduation's at 6.
Yeah.
5 o'clock, so that's over at the Morrison House. From the airport, United Airlines has returned to the airport and has returned with flights. And since I'm flying on Delta on 6:14, I really wish they would return. I'm doing the first trip in a year and two months for business. Amazingly, there, everyone wants to start traveling. All right, anything else? Liaison reports. Town manager report.
Just one item, the Old Home Day Committee continues to meet. We're pretty much meeting every other week now. The next meeting is June 15th at 6 o'clock PM, right here in the Moose Hill Conference Room. The committee keeps growing, more people are showing up, which is great. A lot of things are coming together as far as planning, and the more the merrier. So if people want to show up, get involved, volunteer, we're happy to have them.
Fantastic. Lisa?
Just a couple of quick things. We're still taking applications for the next Leadership Londonderry class, so they're right online on our website. We'd love to have more folks apply for that. Second thing, just my quick usual drought update. We are still in the abnormally dry category as of last week's map on Thursday, which puts us still short of official drought. But we would still ask residents to employ water conservation methods because all the forecasts are that we will end up in drought status at some point this summer.
Anything further from the council?
Oh, one last thing. The butterfly garden has growth. We saw life.
Oh, fantastic.
I think that's amazing, considering we didn't water it. It actually has life. That was amazing.
So ladies and gentlemen, we will be ending the public session of the council meeting. The town council will be going into what we call non-meeting. We'll be going into non-meeting to have a discussion with our attorney about some pieces of legislation, some things around some legal type of advice that we're going to need. Once we come out of non-meeting, we're going to come back into public, and we're going to go into a non-public session in which we will go into a roll call vote for that. So the video person needs to stay so that we can do that. But what I am going to ask you to do is, if you are not a member of the staff or of the council, if you would please excuse yourselves.